I'd like to call the October 7th regular board meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the regular meeting. Welcome to all of you who are with us. And welcome to those who will be watching us on delayed broadcast as well. Allow me to introduce the people at the table with me. From the right, we have Nico Aguirre, Janelle Carter, Mike Miller. From the left, Beth Green and Hernandez, Sean Payton, and Ben Fletcher. At the center table with me tonight, we have Randy Denham to my right as the Board Secretary. And to my left is Dr. Theron Schutte, the Superintendent of Schools, and I am E. Goodluck. We have a pink sheet on the table for you to sign up if you would like to address the Board at any time during this meeting. You'll be given five minutes according to Board policy. And the Board will not be able to respond to your comments, but we thank you for them. Read with me the mission of the Marshalltown Company School District.
We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
And stand as you're able and join me in the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion. Second.
Miller, Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven to zero. Do you know how easy it was for me to hear you and distinguish who it was when you guys both used your microphones?
Well, Jocelyn's taught us for months and months.
We reminded Jocelyn as well. Mr. Potter.
Okay, we have a couple of recognitions today. First of all, last week was National Custodians Day, so we have a couple of custodians that are representing our custodian in the district. They're very hardworking and we wanted to bring them up and recognize them. Eric Smith from Lenahan and Woma Green from Womack. You guys come up and be recognized and on behalf of our custodian, we thank them very much. I don't know if Theron has any words to say as well.
Yeah. What's that? Dr. Schutte.
I'll just say to kick things off that custodians and buildings and grounds workers often kind of work behind the scenes and oftentimes are underappreciated or underrecognized for the great work, not necessarily within the school, but sometimes from people outside. Obviously, their role is critically important to providing the most efficient, clean, and effective learning spaces for our kids and for our staff to work in and obviously have a large role in providing perm appeal for our facilities as well in terms of what the community sees day in and day out. So, I'm still an eight-hundred for Mr. Springer, but we're greatly appreciative of your efforts. I think the very first day I was a teacher back in 1985, I was given the advice of make sure you always stay in the good graces of your custodian and your food service person. So, for good reasons. But thank you for what you guys do. And both Womack and Eric are part of our labor management team that we meet with relatively regularly in order to make sure everything is going well or to correct issues before they become big issues. And we appreciate your service to the staff in that regard too. Love it.
And October is National Principals' Recognition Month, so we'd like to invite the principals and attendants to step up here and be honored.
That is similar to what we just recognized with the custodians. But any question, our building and district administrators, I believe, are some of the hardest working people within the district. A lot of their work is also somewhat behind the scenes and sometimes underappreciated. We always hear when things aren't going well, but don't always hear necessarily when things are going well. And without question, the people that are before you set the tone through their vision and their dedication to make sure everything is happening that needs to happen in order for all students to be successful. So, October is National Principals' Month. They get a whole month instead of a day or week. So, we'll have to make sure to send our thanks all month. But I really appreciate you taking the time to...
Thanks after that.
I really appreciate you taking the time to join us this evening, to be recognized. And I can say wholeheartedly, it's just a phenomenal team to work with in order to do the right work for kids. So, thank you very much.
Before you all rush out the door... Isn't it terrible when you make yourself stop? My quote for tonight is in your honor, so I'm going to share it at this point and not say it at the end of the meeting because none of you will be here at the end as you are all rushing for the door. It's a quote from John Quincy Adams, and for those of you who are students of history, he was a president. He says, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." We thank you for your service. Looking at the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of September 16? Are there any items of note in personnel?
Yeah, the one item that I would bring up is that we have a retirement for William Myers, who was a custodian for the district for 37 years. Started in 1982. A lot of his years were spent focused on the high school kitchen, industrial arts wing, library, so he was definitely kind of a behind-the-scenes guy, but somebody who was entrusted to clean some pretty important areas on a regular basis. So, we're very grateful for his longtime service for our district.
Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, we have an advertising contract renewal with Parskey Group Marketing. We have an MOE with Schopers Teamsters and Helpers Local Union modifying the hourly pay rate for bus drivers who miss their regular route as a result of being on an activity trip. We have an agreement with Skillsoft Corporation. And which fund does that come from? It says the XXXX.
General fund.
We have an agreement with Our School Today for Activity Schedular in the amount of $25.45, and the activities fund will pay for that. We have an agreement with Scenario Learning for Staff Training in Compliance Management in the amount of $7,440. The general fund will be used to pay for that. We have one student to council bluffs, and we have three Level 3 students to woodwork manager. Are there any questions? Looking at open enrollments, we have three out and one denial. Are there any items of note in bills? We have a project research looking at the validity of standardized assessments for English language learners, and that will take place at Woodbury Elementary School. We have a donation from Marshalltown Company in the amount... I didn't want to just say Marshalltown because then it sounds quite nice. In the amount of $500 towards the high school's HOTEC program. We have a personal day change for certified staff that you receive information on. Are there any questions on any of these items? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Some have...
Same.
Carter, Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven to zero. Wait, what's that? Mrs. Wyatt.
This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing a group of students who are participants of the National Hispanic Institute this past summer. They have prepared a short presentation, and I will let them introduce themselves.
There's one more behind you, Jen.
There you go. But you do have to speak into the microphone, okay? It's E. That was wire first, too. Just take it out.
So, my name is Carmen Raiso.
My name is Stephanie Zavala Flores.
My name is Marica Herrera.
I'm Inseriavlos.
I'm Josie Zantana.
And I'm Uriel Campos Padilla.
And we represent the newly formed NHI club and the participants of this summer's NHI programs.
You might be wondering, what is the National Hispanic Institute? It's a program that is designed to teach leadership skills and promote...
Just as Uriel said, it's here to promote and encourage students to speak up and not be afraid to voice their opinion about their community or choices that the community has made.
Yeah, so we were showed how to create groups and how to be a leader, even when the people in your group might not be the same socioeconomic standpoint as you or have the same beliefs as you, but you're still like a leader and you need to be able to have those skills to communicate and to lead other people.
It provides a network of resources, connections, and opportunities such as the Great Debate, Lorenzo's, the Zavala Legislative Session, the Merle Collegiate Series that prepare you for different aspects of community building and leadership later on in life. So, through my experience in the LDZ and focusing on positive assets in the Latino community, something that became abundantly clear was, as the week progressed, was the negative connotation of the word "word Latino" and how frowned upon Latinos are in different parts, coming from different parts of the United States alone, and the lack of representation in our community, in different communities, and overall Congress was very shocking.
So, through this program, we got to learn a lot about how to work with other people. So, that was... We would do that through getting to many new people from other states. I think some of them from another country as well. And we had to improvise constantly because we didn't know what situation we went to put in. And it was really a great experience because we got to work with other people and we had to work efficiently and we had to make do with what we have.
Yeah, like she was saying, like when we're there, the whole thing is kind of... We're blind to the whole situation, so we're just kind of put into it, and we have to improvise in what we're doing.
In many of those cases and situations we were given, they were about either a community setup situation. So, you were given an idea of like, what would happen if a community went through this? What ideas do you suggest that a community should make? And you would be given two choices, and you had to choose which one you believed was better. And you had to support, like you had to support yourself when you spoke.
And also throughout the program, you were put into groups. These groups were... They were selected by the staff, and they had people from all over, from different states, from different schools. And it forced you to kind of become a family with that group. So, over the week, you did different team bonding activities, and you all learned to connect with one another, and that was your group. And that was... That happened in the first two programs, in the Great Debate and in the Lorenzo de Zavala.
Hi, so I would have to agree with Stephanie and Itzai that we all learned how to become a leader. So, for example, growing up, we don't really know much about leadership or representation or how to rule an area in general. So, in NHI, they really teach you how to become a leader, how to preserve our democracy, to also rule an area or group of people, but also include the opinions of these people so you can make fair decisions to make sure they're also agreeing with the decisions you decide to make. This is mainly the main purpose of NHI, how to become a good Latino leader in your community. So, hopefully in the future, you may become a leader yourself based on this experience that we all appreciate we've had.
So, last year, 21 students were admitted to the program, but only nine received funding and were able to attend. This is a great opportunity for... We are the future of our communities, and we are the future of potential congressmen that will get to make decisions for all. And having more people attend this event to get more opportunities through this would greatly benefit the community.
And another benefit is that the National Hispanic Institute calls back some of its alumni, such as myself. I attended the first-year program, the Great Debate, two years ago, and they called me back to staff it. And I thought it was a really interesting experience because you got to see kind of the behind-the-scenes of the whole program. And it was, I thought it was a really interesting learning experience in itself. And I think that if we gave more students the opportunity to attend the programs and the National Hispanic Institute called them back, I think they would have a great learning experience.
Because I do believe this is a great opportunity, and I learned so much about... I was exposed to so many things. Kind of maybe an idea for the future would be, instead of giving full funding for Austin people, maybe we could do partial funding for more and then fundraise the rest. So, the opportunity is extended to more people.
Yeah, when we were given this opportunity, like I was... None of us were really sure what to expect because it is so kind of like kept a secret until you're there, you know? Like you have... Once you're there, like they give you your schedule, and it's jam-packed from like the time you wake up to the time you go to sleep. And sometimes you're sleep deprived, but you have to do the work so that you can, you know, get along and you can actually have the, like, make the most out of the experience. And like, most of us, we didn't, like, yeah, we know how our government works, you know, but we didn't really know what was behind it. And that's like a big advantage that this program has taught us, is what a bill has to go through in order to get passed and how, you know, like our government is not really made for everyone, you know? And we have to be able to be there so that we can make a change and we can actually have all points of view in our government.
Just as Itzai said, it's really hidden. Like, when I was first pulled in and told about this program, I'm like, oh, it's a debate program. Not very my style, but I'll try it. And I was in a group... I was put in a classroom with around 20-something other students, and out of the 20, only four of us went because we had the financial aid for it and we had the time for it. And when I first got there, as you many of you know, like this was paid for, like this whole experience was paid for, which I appreciate highly. I was talking with other students, and many of those cases, most students couldn't go. And I was beginning to think, this was such a great opportunity, and I'm so thankful that I was given financial aid for that at all. So, thank you.
So, kind of to wrap this up, we hope to continue creating future leaders, and we hope to have people keep attending this event and to fundraise enough so more people are able to go. And we thank all of you for giving us this great opportunity.
Questions from the Board?
You didn't say, or I didn't hear, where did it take place? Washington DC?
Oh, no. The Great Debate, which is the first year, was at Augustana College in Rock Island. And then the LDZ that we went to, which is the second-year program, was in Chicago, or in Sorew, Chicago.
And then CWS is the third-year program that none of us have attended yet, and that usually takes... The national one takes place in Florida, and then internationals usually in Philadelphia.
So, I heard you say that it was extremely beneficial, and you want to go back again. So, and I agree fully. I think a lot of other people, your peers, classmates, would probably benefit as well. So, have you preliminarily thought of some things that the club can do to help with some fundraising and also raise awareness so that other people can be bought in and maybe be as interested as you all are?
So, an opportunity that the school offers is two concession stands per, like, concession stand opportunities per group for like season, I think? So, we could start there? That's a start.
I'm also a part of another group that does a lot of fundraising called Science Bound. And there, we, at least close to the springtime, we do a bake sale. And that, and so there's like about 30 students in it, and whenever we all work together to bake something and sell it, we tend to make a lot of money on that day.
How much is it?
Yeah, it depends on like each year, I guess, depending on how many students decide to participate and want to like help out in the group. I believe last year was around 500. 500?
It's closer to 800.
800?
800 per student, yes.
Do we get a group discount?
Worth every penny.
We do not.
Another way, if we were short on money and we're almost like out of gum, NHI itself does offer some help to those that are a little bit short on money so that everybody can go.
It's a great problem to have because it was kind of slow getting this off the ground. I think first year, we had maybe three people that went, and we were hoping for like nine. So, even though it's kind of a challenge to figure out how to pull together the resources, I'm just so glad to hear all of you talk about the positive experience that you had. And it's definitely worth the while of trying to figure out how we can get more students to experience what you guys did. You've done a great job articulating your experience to us tonight.
Thank you for sharing.
It says 21 students admitted, so that means, is this an application program?
Yes.
And 21...
And they're all...
Are they all getting accepted?
Yes. And there's a GPA requirement, and there might be a couple of the ones.
Is that about the size of the club, or is there more? Because I think you said it started kind of with the, created club for this club.
So, um... So, we basically, like, this is... This summer was most of our first time doing it. After the summer was over, like the, our week was over, we chose to create a club now so that we could fundraise for NHI and we can like spread the word more about what NHI is because we were all kind of clueless to begin with.
So, the club's brand-new, you guys, and you guys are the club?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Who's your sponsor, your club sponsor?
Mr. Columbus.
I have to say, they've done a wonderful job, and it's been slow getting the group together in part because this is a phenomenally busy group of students. They represent some of our... It's okay. They represent not just the leaders in our community, future leaders in our community, but right now, they are academic leaders within our school. They are some of our top scholars at Marshallown High School, and they are phenomenally busy with their classes. Most of them, I think all of them are taking quite a few dual-credit classes, so they are trying to get their AA as well as their high school diploma at the same time. So, to get them all in one room at the same time, it is a phenomenal feat. Thank you for this opportunity to allow them to share with you their experiences, and we're very grateful for your support. And we hope to be able to partner with you to, if you have additional ideas and/or if you have contacts that we could work with, to expand our funding base for next summer. That would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Just to piggyback off Carmen mentioning the CWS, the College World Series for the summer after the juniors, is that right? Generally, yeah, a lot of that is focused on the whole college search, college admissions, how to navigate, everything that you need to navigate to position yourself for scholarships and that sort of thing. I can't remember what the number is, but I want to say there's 100 or more colleges and universities from across the country that participate in that event. And there's a lot of potential scholarship opportunity for our kids to participate in that as well.
Thank you very much.
So, at the last meeting, we talked a lot about Homecoming Week, so we just have some pictures to show you how it went. This year's Homecoming Queen is Renee Hernandez Andrade, and Homecoming Queen Catherine Aguero Sanchez.
So, for sports, golf placed second at the Southeast Polk Invite. Volleyball was defeated by Valley. Swimming was defeated by Basin City. Across country, both boys and girls placed seventh out of 14, and football was defeated by AK September. So, now I'm going to tell you about a program called MVP. MVP is a program we do at the high school in the freshman homerooms. Each week, we talk about a different topic. It could be like catcalling, bullying, things like that. And by doing this, you notice that the violence in our school has gone down. So, Abby and I were invited as selected members to represent MHS with six other mentors from across the state to discuss our roles in MVP and how they are implemented at MHS. The students that night were on a panel, and we spoke to the Department of Education at the Project Aware and Youth Mental Health Summit. We spoke about our roles, how they're implemented, and what it is like to be leaders in our school. Okay, so a lot of students at the high school are going to be participating in the zombie room, either running or volunteering. room, either running or volunteering. It's on October nineteenth, and all of the proceeds will go to Grimes Farm. Um a few clubs at the high school that are doing it are Silver Court, NHS, and Cross Country.
So the, and the first competition got canceled due to rain, and the write-back was very um eventful. What about summer's? Tipped. Urban deal, we um got placed sixth out of six, and state is this Saturday, and we hope to continue our streak of Division Ones. Fan Extravaganza and Senior Night are coming up shortly. And as you just heard, NHI is a barely starting out club that focuses on Latino enrichment programs, and it is sponsored by Mr. Campos. See, college application day, a range of colleges and universities such as ISU, UNI, MCC, et cetera, were at the MHS library for seniors to apply for college.
Questions for our ladies? Thank you.
Uh the next topic is on Chromebook purchases, as everyone, I believe, is aware, we are now a one-to-one district for students K-12, I believe we're close to that, if not that, probably, and preschool as well. Um basically, all of our licensed professionals as well as students have access to one-to-one Chromebook and/or other devices. Um really, since I arrived, there had been, as we were progressing more and more, especially at the elementary, towards one-to-one, there has been a desire communicated by our peer professionals for us to consider including them in that, um which we really have given thought to that for the last couple of years, as to whether the rate of return would be worth the investment in providing those. Um most recently, this fall, as we were moving closer to um a time clock system, it came rather apparent for that particular purpose, that would be hugely beneficial for our peer professionals to have a device um from a convenience and expectancy standpoint, but the other issues, as we're outlining, you know, improved communications, as we kind of have to go old school for the most part with our um support staff, and particularly our peer professionals through notes and such, since not all of them have easy access to email throughout the day. They may or may not have their own devices, you know, in terms of phones, but that's not always the most convenient to address email, and some of them don't have email on their phones. But we feel like it'll be a huge improvement for our ability to communicate and our expectations and responsiveness to communications. Uh we do believe that there's merit in uh those peer professionals that are providing direct support for students to have their own Chromebook, it definitely will further enhance our ability both in um during the workday professional developments as well as outside, will provide a, a number of opportunities for us to further develop them through professional development. Um and so for, for all of those reasons, we are recommending board-approved purchase of an additional hundred and fifty Chromebooks to accommodate our peer professionals here coming here.
Questions for Dr. Shu?
Where's, where's the money come from, did you say?
Um we make these purchases through the sales tax. We've shifted much of our technology expenditures to sales tax over the years versus earlier four years ago and prior, we were spending quite a bit of general fund dollars, so we've tried to um move as much of that into sales tax as we can, that's where this expenditure will be.
Is something like this budgeted for in this current fiscal year, or was it not contemplated, and so we're not doing something else that we would have been doing by buying these Chromebooks?
Well, it wasn't budgeted for per se, but we have the capacity within sales tax in order to do this, and um and it's not going to defer us from doing anything that was pre-planned to be done.
Do we know what the longevity is of these Chromebooks?
Um we have our Chromebooks, I believe, on a three to four-year cycle, replacement cycle, so this will be built into that.
Staff, we have on a four-year replacement cycle, students are all this three-year. Gold. Five.
May I have a motion to approve the purchase of a hundred and fifty Chromebooks in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars that's presented?
So moved.
Second. Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries seven to zero.
Yeah, so uh we want to talk a little bit about the secure and advanced vision for education or more commonly known as SAFE or Sales Tax. Um as all of you know, we put before you some time ago now a resolution to approve, which will be on the November ballot for renewal. The Iowa Legislature this past year renewed an extension of SAFE, the original SAFE that we're currently operating on ends of sunsets in two thousand twenty-nine, uh through the legislative action, we now have an extension that will carry till two thousand fifty-one. But in order to access those future proceeds, in order to bond against or to use for other purposes, we need to have a new resolution passed. Uh the primary differences, um as I understand it, for the new SAFE that would start in two thousand twenty-nine to two thousand fifty-one are, before, you can move forward on athletic facilities, you have to ensure that all of your buildings have secured entrances, uh which we already have, as many of you are aware, we've currently recently entertained bids in order to update uh some of our secured entries, and to further enhance secured entries by adding more doors that are um keycard or FOB access to the buildings, as well as, well as looking at um external cameras on our buildings to, particularly the elementary schools, to ramp up our security features there. There are also some additional steps that need to be taken um at the board table relative to athletic facility enhancements and/or construction. I think that was all a product of concerns in certain communities throughout Iowa in terms of the amount of money that was going into certain facilities like stadiums and such, um prior to other things being taken, period. For the most part, the uses are the same, these dollars are instrumental in order for us to move forward on our long-range facilities improvement plan, and they're instrumental in order to sustain replacement cycles of technologies, or to integrate new technologies going forward as well. I know one of the provisions of the new uh SAFE measure is that up to thirty percent instead of fifteen percent as with the current measure will be used for property tax relief as well, so with new pros, new revenue proceeds, which this funding source has consistently had more funds year after year after year, and there's more funding that's projected going forward, up to thirty percent of the new funding beyond what districts currently receive will go to property tax actuate, and that actually, we, we supported that because we would be beneficiaries of that property tax act would be with us, being one of the, as we talked about, um in a prior board meeting, I think we, Paul Attit Sherwood, the ninth lowest per pupil um assessed valuation in the state of Iowa, and so we would hugely benefit from that property tax action, so it's almost like moving funds from one place into another with both of those funds benefiting us, and so um any questions that anyone has regarding the sales tax? It already has provided uh property tax relief, many of the projects that we've done in the past twenty years could not have been done without the, if we did not have a statewide sales tax, it could not have been done without um negatively impacting property tax, whether it be through expansion of the fiscal plan equipment levy, which we only um pursue half of our capacity, because it does have property uh tax implications, or for larger-scale projects that would have required a bond referendum in order to successfully complete them, so uh we've been able to, our needs far outweigh our ability to fund in a timely fashion, a lot of the improvement projects that um we'd like to do um over the course of the last few years, we've had things identified such as the Miller Coliseum being renovated and expanded upon, which there's some very preliminary designs for that. Um Anson Elementary School, um there's a great desire to look at enclosing some of the open classroom spaces from a safety standpoint and um probably a conditions-for-learning standpoint, and there were some preliminary plans, I think, to possibly create a common space up in the gymnasium, so the cafeteria and gymnasium weren't happening in the same location, and maybe some longer-term uh air conditioning improvements there, too. Um most you're aware, especially most recently, of the need at the high school in terms of the original building that still, uh does not have air conditioning, that, that project, because we would also, in addition to air conditioning, need to bring uh the building up to fire code as it relates to fire sprinkling systems, and you know, then we would have the ceilings opened up in order to accommodate both of those things, there would be definitely a strong desire to go to LED lighting, more energy-efficient lighting there, that's probably a fourteen-point-two-million-dollar project on the low end, and so those types of things aren't going to happen just with your annual revenues that you generate from sales tax and/or even Pebbles, so having the capacity to bond um long-term against those future proceeds gives you more leverage in trying to complete those projects without having to pass a bond referendum, not that you would choose to do that anyway, but um this is going to be critically important for us to be able to sustain what we have, as well as to continue to uh make decisions based on future priorities of projects, and getting those projects done sooner or later.
Can you remind us what the annual revenue is on this, for this district?
About eight million a year.
And this is, this doesn't change in the short term right now, we're asking voters to approve, it doesn't change tax rates, it doesn't change the tax and sales tax rate, it's just adjusting the sunset and updating the purpose statement on what we just got.
Correct, the SAFE doesn't have any impact on the property tax rates, other than what we do, what we abate to bring down our debt service levy.
It provides you increased capacity for borrowing if you so choose to do projects sooner than, you know, the revenues would come in, and keep in mind of the current revenues we're receiving, all but about, I think, a million to a million and a half are obligated, I think, with past projects. I think we bonded um probably eighty to ninety percent of that.
Correct.
So we need voters to approve this, uh just a majority, we'll be on the next ballot here, this is nice and around, the State House is bored.
Yes, and that means a sixty percent.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent, that would be.
How about just a simple majority, is it a sixty percent?
I can double-check on that, but I'm pretty sure it's a sixteen for that.
We'll get you a certification on that, but I know a referendum is sixty, it's, I'm not sure about sixty, is that fifty-one?
Majority would be fifty-one percent, it says majority here.
Does it, okay, I missed that, sorry.
Other questions? The Allers Engagement Letter?
So, um this is just uh to refinance our, is it our two thousand thirteen bonds that were issued? Um Piper Jaffrey reached out to us, and with the interest rate market the way it is now, um we have an opportunity to refinance uh these bonds, so um one of these first steps will um to be approved, this engagement letter, Allers will be assigned as the bond counsel for the reissuance of these uh bonds, so this is just one of the first steps in the process, the formality.
Questions? May I have a motion to recommend approval of the Allers Engagement Letter to serve as bond counsel for the series twenty nineteen Sales Tax Refunding Bonds Issuance? Second. Fletcher Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? The motion carries seven to zero.
Uh the next item, the Piper Jaffrey Engagement Letter, same thing, Piper Jaffrey would be our um fiscal agent, um they would uh they'll take our bond documentation and put it out to market for bid, and they will handle all of that for us and collect all the information, and then um submit the bids to us once those come in.
Any anticipated savings between one eighty and two thirty?
Two thirty, yep, and I talked to Piper Jaffrey this morning, um with the current interest rates as of today, the schools they were working with, we're hoping it can even be a little bit more than that, but um we won't give the bids for another month, so it could change, but uh we're hoping for at least two hundred, probably more.
When you calculate that savings two hundred or two thirty, this one eighty, two thirty range, is it savings after all the fees that pay Allers and Piper Jaffrey?
Yes, it's the net savings after all those.
It's the net saving.
After all those fees, correct.
May I have a motion to approve the private placement engagement letter with Piper Jaffrey pertaining to the issuance of the twenty nineteen Sales Tax Refunding Bonds?
So moved.
Second. Heitman Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? The motion carries seven to zero.
Moving right along, the next item would be what's called a participants' package, this is the document that Piper Jaffrey will put out to market for us that will outline basically what we're trying to do, which is basically refinance um bonds that have previously been issued by the district uh back in two thousand thirteen, so this is what the bidders will see to submit this to us um in a month. If there's any questions on that, I can try and field those for you.
And I have a motion to approve the draft offering items um for the twenty nineteen SAFE refunding bonds. So. Carter Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? The motion carries seven to zero. One more.
Um the next, we have to set a resolution for a public hearing for the refinancing of these bonds, so this is just the formality of setting a public hearing.
And that will be?
Uh twenty-first, twenty-sixth. Yes.
Questions? May I have a motion to approve the date for the hearing on the proposed issuance of infrastructure, sales, services, and use tax revenue refunding bonds?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Fletcher?
Yeah, I only go with Miller.
Okay. And so then Fletcher.
Yep.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? The motion carries seven to zero, sorry, Nico. Sorry, Nico. I'm assuming more to you again.
Yep, so 5.07, Buildings and Grounds Retirement and Senate. A couple of years ago, when we moved language from the contract to employee handbooks, we also made an insurance change that our Buildings and Grounds staff, custodial staff, came along with the district insurance versus them having their own standalone insurance through their union. And in doing so, the language was pulled for an early retirement package that was tied to that insurance package. And so, this policy, which is just for initial review and will come back before you, is just making adjustments, basically our intent was not to take away the opportunity for early retirement, it was simply to bring it in line inconsistency with our other employee groups, and so that's what this particular policy does. It puts back on the books so that a month from now, you can determine along with the other employee groups that we've offered early retirement to in the past, whether the same should be true for custodian buildings and grounds.
And that would be listed as a board policy in the board policy review.
Yes.
Any questions at this time? Janelle?
So, with all the, pull those up, 104 policies, disclosure forms and complaint forms, I would say, Mark, you need to change it.
Are there any questions from board members? 104 R2 harassment of students, 104 E1, the harassment complaint form, and 104 E2, the disclosure form. We'll all be marked as reviewed. Is there a change?
Yes.
Oh, is there?
E1.
104 E1.
It basically just takes it out of the body and puts it into the title.
To be consistent with the other policy.
There's no real change.
Is everyone okay with that?
And then 4026R, there's three bullets added into that one as well.
Yeah, we had recommendations made through a recent audit to ramp up the efforts of password protection, and so those bullets represent that, those additions within this policy, and I'll be bringing that back to you for a first reading at the next meeting.
Mr. Potter, anything of note in communications? Looking at reminders, we have Sean with three policies for next week or two weeks. We have the ModTech Open House at Miller Middle on the 16th of October, drop-in anytime from 11:30 to 1:00. Teacher Quality will meet on Tuesday, like as in tomorrow Tuesday. Hoadland Elementary will provide us with our first showcase at our next board meeting.
Second showcase. Oh, showcase here, my bad.
Geez, that was way back when I was gone in March, April, or whatever, okay. The first one.
We have the next meeting.
We have, there was a Franklin curricular visit, there's another one scheduled for the 30th. Please let Lisa and/or whoever sends out the invite know if you're going to be attending. And I think you've already received the invite for the November curricular visit at Anson as well. Is there anything else from the finance committee that we haven't already discussed?
We pretty much covered it.
Yeah, pretty well hit the highlights.
It was exciting.
Internal Communications, Darren?
Yeah, we had our first internal communications meeting of the year. Was that last Friday or two Fridays ago? Some of the topics that we talked about were kind of our newly revised labor management meetings, where we have intentions on having periodic meetings throughout the year with all of our employee groups that are represented by the union as kind of a byproduct of the collective bargaining process, employee handbook about that. So Nora's going to be working with the leadership of those groups to, number one, broaden representation where that's warranted across the district, and then number two, to set up a regular meeting schedule, whether that be quarterly, monthly, et cetera. We talked about, a little bit further about the employee handbook, which is a top priority for Nora to get accomplished. We had some discussion about FMLA and how we've been working hard over the course of this last year to educate people and to get appropriate documentation in place in a proactive way versus a reactive way going forward, and it's taken, because for many years, it's kind of been in the 12th hour when we've implemented that, so it's taking a while to get people to understand that this is a good thing, it's you're for your protection type of thing, to have paperwork in place in the event that an episode turns into an FMLA-related event. And then, as is usually the case this time of year, we had some discussion about substitutes, the shortages, classroom substitutes, the difficulty sometimes inherent in covering classrooms under those circumstances, and it's created the opportunity again for us to take a closer look at the number of absences of our employees that we're experiencing, and the reasons for those absences, and how it's kind of a combination of all of the above. A lot of absences, not a lot of subavailability that's, you know, creates some difficult situations. And obviously, we want the highest quality of people in our classrooms at all times, if possible, so it's something that we'll continue to work on as other districts are across the state and country as well. I think that was the highlight.
Eastern?
An eastern meeting that we have quarterly with our local city and county government and other educational institutions and city service institutions. The city, Joe Brewer was there, and he talked about the upcoming city elections for council person, talked about the opening, which was hugely successful, plays fire station, and there's some other open houses, I think one of which is this week, and then there'll be another one. Very highly attended, their first open house. And then he also talked about some of the proposed improvement projects that the city was contemplating at that time for budgeting purposes as well. Our Central Rivers AIA talked about how they turned over management of their pool to the parking rack department of the city, and we utilized that for many of our disabled students throughout the year as well. And they also talked about their renewed emphasis in providing professional development for districts with a portrait of the graduate work, of which we've been doing over the course of the past year through CAC with the help of Andrew Stewart from Mississippi Bend AIA. So we're hopeful that we may be able to transition that in the coming year to our own regional leaders in that role. Kristy Fisher was president from Iowa Valley, I believe, and Robin as well, and she talked about how the enrollment was up at MCC, but it was down in Iowa Valley, basically, because I think the Iowa Falls or Ellsworth was down a bit. Adult learning is down, which they said was common when unemployment is low. And then they talked about their upcoming bond referendum they have at Iowa Valley, that'll be part of the November elections, and then they also talked about how they recently secured a mayor core volunteers to serve students at MCC. And then Iowa State University Extension was represented by Amy Piper, she talked about the successful STEM camps that they held once again this summer, and said that they're looking forward to hopefully continuing partnership with us in order to put those on for any of our students that wish to participate. Anything else you can add?
What have we done this evening to improve the education for students in the district?
It was really enjoyable to hear from students about any of that. It was really interesting, it was a great experience, it's exciting. Glad to see so much more involvement.
Anything else?
Providing better access for our parrot educators, with the utilization of those Chromebooks to be a better resource to the students.
You've already had my quote. So that means we're ready to adjourn unless anybody else has anything for the good of the order. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you, we are here. Thank you all for being here for dinner with.